Your worship, I have 4:40 whenever you're ready.
Welcome to the regular meeting of council Tuesday, November the 2nd, 2021 at 4:40 PM. Reading called to order and we'll have a moment of silence. Motion approved the agenda?
Moved by Patrick Adams, seconded by Rick Owen. Be resolved that the agenda for the regular meeting of council held on November 2nd, 2021, beginning at 4:40 PM be approved or circulated to all members of council.
All in favor? Motion carried? Any declaration of pecuniary interest?
I just have a clarification because there's a bylaw coming up later on with respect to the first main for Peterson Construction. Do I need to declare a pecuniary interest because of that by law? How's that going to be?
Through your worship, I'm unable to advise specifically if you should or shouldn't, but the rule of thumb is it's better to declare if you think if not.
I was do so declare.
What item number is that?
That would be where on the bottom of one of the bylaws.
Okay, Patrick?
Yep, item 6.4 Employee of KLG and I think that's 8.4 as well.
Okay, noted. Petitions and delegations from Agnico Eagle project update on the Upper Beaver project. Sarah Moray and Mark Moffett. Via Zoom. Welcome Sarah and Mark.
Hello.
Yep, welcome to the council meeting.
Thank you. Do you want us to start now? Do you want us to introduce ourselves or do you expect us to do that?
Sarah, I have allowed you to share your screen if you wish for the presentation, so I'll let you take the reins on that.
Perfect, thanks. So maybe Mark, we can start with a quick introduction?
Yeah, I can start. So Mark Moffett, I'm the project director for the development of Upper Beaver project.
And Sarah Moray, I'm the environmental coordinator for the Upper Beaver project, so I'm in charge of the permitting, but also working a lot with our stakeholders around the project. And we also have with us Chantal from Transpar.
Yes, hello everyone. I'm with Sarah and Mark to take notes tonight for the meeting report.
Good, so Mark, thank you.
Okay. So we can go to the next one. Yeah, so first of all, thank you to give us the opportunity to to present to you the update about the our project, Upper Beaver project. So we will start with the general update about the project, the recent, let's say, news about the company, activities on site. And then if you have any question all along the presentation, do not hesitate, or you can wait at the end as you want. So we try to gather the information in a couple of slides, but we have other information available if you need so. So general update about the project. But first of all, the more the more recent news about Agnico Eagle is the merge ongoing with Kirkland Lake Gold. So it has been announced at the end of September. The shareholder vote will be in November, so we are confident, but we have to wait for the vote. But the idea behind that is really to to share benefits of synergies between both companies. As you can see on the map on your right, you have the blue color, the current asset we have in Quebec from Agnico Eagle. In other color, it all the assets owned by Kirkland Lake Gold. So the intention behind that, it's benefit synergies between both companies, but also to consolidate our position in Canada. So as you can see on the map from Deter Lake on the north, pass through Timmins, through all the corridor between Timmins and Valdor. With that merge, we will have the opportunity, many opportunities for exploration and assets. We are confident then be able to develop more, more, more project than Upper Beaver in the future with that merge. Go to the next one. So on exploration activities on site, so we are still in exploration at Upper Beaver. So mainly diamond drilling from surface, targeting the deep portion of the ore body. We are still the focus to drill on Upper Beaver, but also on the regional exploration. As you can see on the map, we hold the mini claims, the area is very large, all the blue light color showing the current claim we have on the property. So in 2021 and 2022, we will keep going with drilling on that property to define other potential for a future mine in addition of Upper Beaver. So mining legacy, so for sure, we talk a lot about Upper Beaver, but we use on the precedent precedent map, then we have also other legacies to take care of. So we work on the Salvagni property. We work on Swatyska property and Bitgood property. So some of the work is to take care of stability of the crown pillar. Some others to new investigation drilling to come. So we are still ongoing with with those properties in parallel with the Upper Beaver work. About Upper Beaver Gold Project, so just to remind you, then Upper Beaver is it's an old site. Means then they were mined before us, mostly from 1912 to 1971. You can see the black and white picture in the right corner of the of the photo there, showing the old mill, all the granite mines, sitting on the west side of York Lake. You send the pictures, York Lake, Avale Lake, but just beside that, you have all the green line showing you all the excavation made before. So so we have to deal with that, we have to manage that area. It's why you probably heard about the fact then, following that last investigation on the crown pillar, we now in our scenario propose an open pit to take care of the current situation we have. The crown pillar is thinner and weaker than expected. So we add in the the plan of mining Upper Beaver on the ground, a small open pit at the beginning of the operation to take care of that situation we have on site. About timeline, so so we are still in exploration in 2021 for many years now. Still diamond drilling, still investigation, tried to define the right scenario for the project, increase our knowledge about the project, working on technical studies. We are still waiting for to complete our studies, but also to to the approval of our upper management. But if everything is going well somewhere in 2022, we can move to the next phase, which is going to be the advanced exploration phase from 2022 to 2024, 2025. Mainly that phase, that's going to be a time to go on the ground to get samples, bulk samples. To achieve that, we will need to build the shaft, exploration shaft and the expression ramp. And then be able to validate our assumption than we have made before. And if everything is going well, that will allow us to move to the next phase, which is the project approval and construction phase to prepare the production in that in that years from 2026, 2027. That's going to be the preparation for the production phase, mainly the construction of a mill telling facilities, lake the watering, preparation of the open pit. And then be ready to be in main production in 2028 for about 14 years in our current mine plan we have. So that's going to be the portion where we'll extract the ore, get some revenue. And then at the end of of that mining, that's going to be the closure in the rehabilitation period. Next slide. In terms of ongoing activities on site, so in terms of permitting, we are at the beginning of of the planning phase for the impact assessment with the federal agency. We have submitted the initial project description recently and we are still working on that right now on the detailed project description. So it's ongoing, it started. We are still doing some work on site to establish the baseline for the site. Mainly the baseline is really to define the current status of the site before any mining activities, any new mining plan incorporating the definition of water resources, aquatic noise, terrestrial and so on. We are working on technical and economical studies. And we also have the plan to make to make and to achieve other geotechnical field investigation to get more data on site and to install new monitoring wells for Upper Beaver. Next slide. Upper Beaver in nutshell, so is really the underground project. So you see on the picture on your right, across section of the mine showing with different different area of the ore body. You have in red the open pit, which is pretty small compared to the rest. So it's really an underground mine, still in the ground mine, even if we have an open pit in the first years of operation to manage the rig associated with their rock stability. In the blue color, this is the historical workings area. So we have the intent to recover the remaining portion of the ore in that portion. And to the green, this is the new area, the new mine going deeper, reaching, let's say, 1.5 kilometer right now. So we will need a shaft because the mine is deep at some point in the ramp, it's going to be to target the shallow portion of the body. So it's a gold mine, but there's still some copper inside mainly for the deeper area. So the intended to recover gold and copper, but gold represent more than 95% of the value of the project. Life of mine extend to 14 years, the lead on age over 5,000 tonne a day. Next slide. So we talk a lot about impacts, but there's also potential benefits for the community. So if we move forward with the project, for sure, we will impact the site, but with the the open pit and the recovering of the operation of the mine, we will be in position to reclaim that area. As you are aware, we have some quality stability issue, we have fences surrounding an area when the crown pillar is very thin, when the there are some breakthrough from from underground with the surface. So that gave us the opportunity to reclaim that area in the future. We will upgrade for sure the road and give a give a better access to Beaver Rock Lake. The employment opportunities will be more than 400 jobs, that's not include the construction period. Many business opportunities will be there with the project, we have a local procurement policy. Try to encourage and and the local suppliers and local employment as much as possible. Training opportunities for people, financial support for community projects for sure. Next slide please. Just a plan view, a real view of the site, the proposed plan for the the operation. So on the map, so you have the all in blue, the lake, the Beaver House Lake, Avale Lake and York Lake just in the center. You get access to the site by Beaver House Road coming from Duby from the south. Then you have in the center, the the current open pit plan for the project. Then just beside in the gray area, you have the the shaft area, the proposed mill area. Just north of that, you have all the water treatment plant and sedimentation pond. North of that, the rock storage facilities. And on the upper right, you have the tailing area, the dry stack area for the mine. Just on the left, you have the overburden pile, then we will reuse for reclamation at the end. So yeah, this is a preliminary site layout. It's not all fixed, there's still there's still some studies to complete, but this is the the scenario we we have now for the project. In terms of environmental authorization, so we've talked about the federal impact assessment process. So it's a long process that will take up to take up more than five years. So we'll talk a lot about federal, but it's include also provincial approvals in many different aspects for the project. So we have to wait from the decision, the agency decision about the project if we will be under the or to be submit to to do an impact assessment, but because we we trigger two main criteria, which is the tonnage per day over 5,000 tonne. And because we have to water divert the water. So that two criterias will likely be sure to submit the project to an impact assessment in the future. So we have to wait the decision of the agency probably at the beginning of next year on that subject. But we are pretty confident then we will submit to be submit to an impact assessment. In terms of planning, so we are at the beginning. So we submit in September, October, the the initial project description, then the agency now is in the period of consultation and it's done, it was done for three weeks. Then we are now in November, working about the detailed project description, including all the comments and answer the the question we had from stakeholders, different stakeholders. And then the agency will draft the tailor guidelines in January and then do another consultation period in February next year. And then in March finalize the terror guidelines that that will be used to start the impact assessment and mitigation measure for the project. So so there is a multiple area for consultation for people and the next one will be in February. Upcoming activities for site on the site, so baseline is ongoing. The detailed project description, we are working with that with the agency. We are still doing exploration activities on site, complete our technical and economical studies. If we have completed that and get all the permits from provincial and also get the internal approval. We can think then next year in 2022, we can start the advanced exploration phase, which is start with the some vegetation clearing, some preparation of the pad to prepare to the edge frame construction and the ramp portal construction, some road improvement also. And we will keep going with engagement activities with the different stakeholders following that that activities. So just to let you let you know, then we have different possibility for information with the people. We have recently a dedicated website for Upper Beaver, give it gives information about the project itself. People can go there, have information about Beaver and subscribe on the website to our email email alert to be notified of the latest news and events regarding the project. And if you have any citizen have question regarding Upper Beaver, do not hesitate to contact us by email or whatever the the way you would like. This is the end. Do you have any question related to the presentation? That was quick. I hope not too quick, but.
Counselor Shaba?
Yeah. Good afternoon, good afternoon, Monsieur Moffett. I have a couple of questions for you. The well, very impressed with the presentation, especially the 400 to 600 jobs that it may bring later on down the road. My first mundane question would be, now that you guys merged with Carroll Gold, where will your head office be? I think Kirkland Lake would be in the middle. Tim is Tim is Valdor, so you don't have to answer that question, I just told that. I mean, it's nice to have your head office here. I understand other people have head office somewhere else. Have you, in your presentation, you indicated that you'd be consulting with indigenous communities in the area? Have you started that?
Yeah.
Consultation with them?
Yeah, yeah. So just to let you know the about the First Nation, we have agreement with most of them for on the five First Nation since 2014. So we have exploration agreement with them for all exploration activities on site. That's covering the advanced exploration period, so we are in close discussion with them since 10 years now, almost 10 years. So we consult the the all the communities identified by the provincial at that time.
Finally, we we do have, just to let you know, we have a community college here that may be of assistance to you in your search for workforce. So hopefully you'll be able to connect with with them. I I know I'm a businessman and I tell you one thing, skill, people are very, very hard to find these days. I know your your job is 2026, 28 production down the road, but I'm sure you must be looking around to see where those people is going to come from. And I can tell you that we're getting ready at municipal level too, to make sure that there will be sufficient housing, affordable housing and accommodation for those for your workforce that will be coming in. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Counselor Owen?
Yeah, thank you very much for the presentation. As a reporter, I covered this project, actually going back to when was it Falcon Bridge Gold had it, I believe? And I think Subbury Contact had it at one point, or at least had a lot of the properties that you're dealing with now. Certainly spent many years working with Queenston Charlie there. So I'm very pleased to see this actually moving ahead. I have a couple of questions. One was about indigenous that Counselor Shaba asked. The dewatering of the lake, now you got to remember, this is Kirkland Lake and we don't have a lake because of mining activity. And it's a hot button issue with environmentalists every time a mining company, and I'm not saying it's a good thing, but every time a mining company wants to do something with a water way, it it's a hot button issue. Have you had any resistance to to this plan over that or? I assume it's a small lake, I'm not familiar with the lake, so.
Yeah, it's a good question. And in fact, you're right, it's a hot discussion with many stakeholders. And we for sure, just to reassure you, then we look at different scenario before to the water the lake and and let's say, ended up with that scenario, we look at different ones. So this is not our first choice, but but this is the reality if we want to mine the same area than before. And to be safe on the ground, we have no choice to do our York Lake, which is not a large lake, but it's a lake, part of the system from Beaver House to have a lake to York Lake down to Missam River. So it's going downstream, so so what we what we the message is is really to take care of the current situation of our crown pillar, which is not good as we anticipated at the beginning. And we we talk about to the water of the lake temporarily. So it means during mining underground activities. Our intention is at the at the end of the mining, underground mining, to to put the water what water will was before. And we are talking to divert water, so the intention also is to not change water level in those lakes, Beaver House and Avale Lake. And just divert it more on the south, going still at the same place in Missam River. We also try to minimize as much as possible the effect of the water of the lake and the size of the open pit to not touch the island between York Lake and Avale and preserve some archaeological sites and accessible sites for indigenous nation. So we, I think we have, we we took care or be be the right things with the right approach. But it's still a lot of discussions surrounding that and it's normal. It's not, it's not something easy when you talk about to the water lake. And it's the, I think we we had many discussion with indigenous group and cottagers living around the lake. Most of them, I think, understand the situation, but there's still some some other question than we want to answer in the next couple of months and years and work with them to explain more about the situation and and see how we can mitigate that fact, then we have to do with the lake at some point. So probably in the future, because in our mindset, we have no choice to do with the lake, we will have probably to do some offsetting measure at some point also. So that will be a discussion then we'll have with government and authorities for sure in the future.
I don't, I don't want to leave you with the impression that I'm against you, that that part of the project, because having covered mining, reported on mining for about 30 years. I know the last thing a mining company wants to do is mess with fresh water. Okay, so to me, it's obvious, you don't have another choice. And in today's environment, we can't have another non Kirkland Lake lake, you know? It's just not the way mining companies operate today. I also had a question about the open pit, is that open pit right on the Upper Beaver property?
It will be right or including the York Lake. So it's really where the there were there were mining before, mines before. So it's really in the same area than before. So.
So the the upper Canada, I know at one time there was a lot of talk about putting in an open pit at the upper Canada. That would be a separate project if you were ever to do that.
You're right, it's going to be a separate project, yeah.
Okay, well, great. Thank you very much and I wish you all the best. As a council, I can't speak on behalf of the council, but I know we are excited about the project. Partly for selfish reasons, we want to see our community move ahead and grow and and anytime a new mine opens up, it's a good paying jobs. I only have one favor to ask. I have a son-in-law who works in drilling and he's gone for a month and then he's back for two weeks. And I know that's the modern way of of mining, but I would really like it if Agnico Eagle could try to persuade its employees to move to Kirkland Lake. And they'll love it. It's a great place. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not looking for work right now, I'm retired. Mark, how many people are actually working there right now in in the exploration aspect of it? And are they all contractors or they or are they Agnico held employees?
Yeah, we have an expression office in the south of Duby. Same same office then upper Canada use in the past in the seventies. So so we have a dedicated team for the area. And you we go employees, let's say, probably, let's say, less than 20 people working there. And then for sure, we have contractors. The main contractors right now is major, so we have drillers. Now, now we are, we have four to six drills on 24 hours, seven days a week. So probably another 30 to 40 drillers working at Beaver.
Yeah, just for curiosity, at the 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 building that's out there near Duby, is that the old? Yeah, just for curiosity, at the, the, the building that's out there near Dobi, is that the old Upper Canada Mill?
Uh, not the old Upper Canada build, but it's a part of the operation of Topper Canada. So the, uh, the expression office is really the same building than they use at Topper Canada at that time. But I don't think it's the mill office. I, I'm not sure, Sarah.
Okay.
No, it's not the mill. The mill has been demolished a few years ago, like a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I, I went out there for a drive not too long ago and I, uh, I've been going back a few years, remembering when the Upper Canada was, uh, operating. I wasn't sure. So any other comments or questions from common, uh, council? Not noted. Well, uh, thank you, uh, for a great presentation and it's nice to see, uh, the activity going on out there and the, uh, future looks bright. As councillor Owen said, uh, we certainly want to work closely with anybody that's going to create four hundred jobs in our area. And, uh, anything we can do to support you, uh, give us a call. Thanks again for the presentation.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye. Your motion to receive?
Moved by Casey Owens, seconded by Stacy White. Be it resolved that the delegation from Agnico Eagle on the Upper Beaver Project be received.
All in favor? Motion carried? Acceptance of minutes and recommendations?
Moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff. Be it resolved that council approve the minutes of the following meetings, minutes of the regular meeting of council held October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, and that council accept the minutes of the following committee meetings, minutes of the police service board meeting held July fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, minutes of the museum advisory committee meeting held September sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, and minutes of the library board meeting held September twenty-third, twenty twenty-one.
All in favor? Motion carried? Item number six, reports municipal officers and communications, uh, six point one. Well, water advisory verbal from, uh, Director Jim Roman.
Uh, thank you, your worship, through you to council. Um, we here at Public Works, we aim to provide the town with the cleanest, safest drinking water possible. Uh, we're acutely aware of the disruption to businesses, convenience to customers that comes with a boil water advisory. However, we all recognize that the safety of our drinking water trumps all else. So I'd like to thank the businesses and residents alike for their cooperation and understanding during the two-day advisor. Uh, tonight, I'm here to reassure the public that the water coming from their taps is completely safe. I have the utmost confidence in the Ontario Clean Water Agency in their operation of our water treatment plant. I'm satisfied with their explanation of the event and the measures they've put in place to prevent a recurrence. So for, uh, further details, I'd like to now turn it over to Eric Nielsen, the regional manager for Aqua.
Thank you, Jim, and good evening, uh, your worship and council. Um, first of all, I, um, it was a difficult time. Um, I, I think what, what, what made me, uh, what made the time easier was the, the support of Jim and Brian Owen and the entire, uh, staff of the waterworks at, at physical services. Um, during these times, i- it's, it's nice to see when people band together, uh, to solve what's in front of us and to move forward with what is in front of us. So, uh, Jim, uh, please extend my thanks to your team. That was, that was good to see. So the details, and, uh, on the night of October twenty-seventh, um, we, we ended up with, uh, I'll get to the, to the why, okay? Uh, it was a mechanical failure. Um, now these mechanical failures happen all the time at the plants. These are things and, and, and the public doesn't even know generally what happens. So chlorinator was, uh, it was the reason for the loss of chlorine residual. Um, it uses a water operated injector. And so it's a tiny little quarter inch line is this one part that ended up getting a pinhole in it. Um, it operates as a vacuum tube. So what it did is it drew in atmospheric air instead of chlorine. Okay, so these things happen. Uh, the problem was, is that it did not, the, the, the wind nine-one system, uh, that was being, that's being installed, uh, as part of the new SCADA project, did not call out. So, uh, shortly after twelve-thirty, um, we had our, our total chlorine analyzer over in the clear wells recognized that it was, uh, that there was low chlorine. It alarmed on SCADA, but didn't alarm on the, on the alarm dialer. Um, and then at one-thirty, our free chlorine analyzer alarmed on SCADA, but didn't alarm on the, on the alarm dialer. So it, it, when, as we investigated that, now during the SCADA installation, um, I can assure you that, uh, that the, that the automator and Aqua operations, we, as we'd install an alarm, it would be tested and, and whatnot. Um, but what happened, it's, it seemed that, it, it seemed that for this particular issue, um, it, it, it's, the, the word we're going to use, it didn't unlatch. And so it's believed, uh, an old alarm hadn't cleared. It, it hadn't been cleared within, within the SCADA program. It was, it's so, it didn't unlatch the, the alarm dialer, so it didn't call out. Uh, that, that issue has since been resolved, I can assure you. Secondly, um, what we've done is we've, we've installed sort of direct wire installations. We had our instrumentation, uh, Kirkshire Rock go up there and, and make sure that we're going to have critical alarms are going to be called. They're hardwired into call. Um, that system's going to be, uh, going to remain intact, um, uh, during the entire SCADA project and, and most likely afterward. Um, furthermore, we had a discussion with the, uh, with, with Stroma, the SCADA, um, instrumentation guy on, uh, on Friday in a meeting and, um, and we got him to reach out to Aqua SCADA integrators and, uh, they worked together to make sure, and they found two, uh, issues that, uh, that were most likely the cause and they since solved that. Um, further testing is going to, going to take place as well. The way that, the way that, again, I mentioned that the way that everybody acted was, was professional. It was, it was, we were right on top of things. We were fortunate that, uh, right at seven o'clock in the morning, an Aqua operator had, had attended the plant, noticed the low chlorine levels and he immediately shut off the high lifts and we started to pull water from the, um, from the tower. Um, you know, the health unit was, was, um, notified right away. M O, MECP was notified right away. Jim was notified right away. And by seven-twenty in the morning, we were acting on it. Um, the cause of the problem was rectified by shortly after eight, about eight fifteen in the morning. Um, and then we manipulated the plant within to try to get rid of some of that water that wasn't properly chlorinated. And, uh, when we were confident in that, we started pumping it back into the town. Um, and during the day, uh, actually still in, still in the morning, as we were, as we were putting notices on doors and whatnot, um, Brian Owens' crew was, was out flushing and, uh, and I stopped by some of the people that were out flushing. And, uh, and it was nice to see that chlorine levels were returning to normal. However, we still had to wait for those two sets of results to come back, um, just for a, a reassurance that, uh, that we could lift the boil water advisory. So again, uh, Jim, thank you to you and your team. Uh, I, I like when we have cooperative efforts, things. We do our best to, 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 to have as, to address as many risks as we possibly can. We can't see anything. We can't see everything all the time. Um, but it's how you respond at the end of the day is, is, is what matters. So if there's any question on that, I'd welcome any questions.
Uh, councillor Shaba, sorry?
Yeah, good afternoon, Eric. Um, so I think, uh, one of the, um, documents that I received when I got on the council has to do with this SCADA equipment that you guys have and there's a need to replace it or something like that. Correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, I, I, but, um, you know, usually, um, um, I'm, I'm somewhat familiar with water treatment and all of that stuff. You know, when we come to pumps, you always talk about, well, students, make sure you have a backup. You don't buy one pump, you have two or three or four. So I'm kind of a little surprised that, uh, in inline chlorination, uh, with total chlorine, that we only have one chlorinator. You don't have a backup chlorinator down the line to, uh, address the problem. So is, I mean, I don't know how the system is set up, but you know, I always try to say, well, you should have a backup for everything, uh, just in case. Um, can you, can you take us through that? You have inline chlorination, right?
Yes, we do.
Before the clear well or after the clear well for the, uh, chlorine demand?
This, this particular suction line, uh, and you're correct, uh, councillor, that there, that redundancy is the answer. Uh, we do have two, uh, chlorination, uh, two actual chlorinators that, that can act. Um, however, the feed is, uh, it's, uh, it's a common feed on this, uh, on this suction tube that failed.
Councillor Owens?
Were you done councillor Shaba or? Is that okay or?
Well, you go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay. So I, it's not a question on my part. It's more of a congratulations, I guess, or it made me proud to be a councillor for the town of Kirkland Lake when things felt, okay, there was a problem. It, the public got notified, the community banded together to be able to make sure we had water. Uh, grocery stores reached out to their suppliers, trucks were sent into town, uh, schools got supplied with water. It worked. The system worked. And I know a lot of people complained it was an inconvenience to have to, excuse me, to boil your water for a minute. Some communities in this country have to do that all year long. They don't have a Walmart down the road or a grocery store that can get the stuff in quickly. So it just makes you realize that, no, we're lucky. Kirkland Lake had a problem. People did their jobs. Aqua did what we paid them to do, really. Did they do it great? The water is good and things are back to normal. Just food for thought. So I just want to personally thank you guys for the work you did on this one.
Well, thank you very much. And I echo those comments, um, uh, during the day when I, I was out in the public and, and ultimately I'm, I'm the one responsible for it and, um, it, it was, uh, the public was encouraging as well. Thank you for that.
The fact that, uh, you had all those flyers delivered so, so quickly, was the town staff involved in that as well, Eric?
Absolutely. As, as a matter of fact, uh, as a matter of fact, your worship, it was, uh, it was Jim who, who, who started the entire organization in conjunction with Anthony. And so we got, uh, we got the waterworks crew together and, uh, some of the, as many Aqua people as we could, we got together, Jim organized, we had streets and maps, uh, worked out who was going to go where. And it was, uh, it was very, very well done.
Well, on behalf of council, I think I, if I can speak, uh, of our gratitude for the quick turnaround and, uh, ensuring the, uh, water was safe and, and letting people know, uh, what the problem was and how quick, quickly you acted on it, uh, I congratulate our town staff and, and, uh, Aqua staff for job well done. And I think as councillor Owens said, uh, you know, when something goes wrong, it's always the town's fault. Uh, you hear that often. Uh, certainly they came through in the crunch. So, uh, thank you to all your staffs, both the town staff and Aqua. Well done.
Thank you very much. Yeah. So, uh, my, the other part of my question, on the infrastructure side, uh, how can we, um, make sure that this is, uh, not going to repeat itself? Like, is this SCADA, uh, it could be that you guys alluded to, one of the things that I read, is this something that, uh, uh, the council will have to maybe look at and, uh, prioritize that later on for as part of our capital projects? Is this something that we need to, uh, to look at? Uh, because, I mean, the fault itself is more or less, I should put it mechanical. So we have to really, it is our responsibility here, sitting around here. Uh, we have the liability according to the municipal act individually too. Uh, if something is not working, uh, that needed to be, that need to be replaced. Uh, this is where, I mean, we have to look at it and then, uh, try to work with you guys to make sure that, uh, that's replaced. And I concur with one of my colleagues, this is not something that's very frequent in our community. But then, um, you know, we, our job here is to make sure that, uh, you know, we don't, uh, we don't run into that for a very long time. So, well, I mean, maybe something that you and, and Jim, uh, can, can, can work onto it to let us know because, uh, if that fault is of, uh, mechanical and then we have an aging infrastructure there, uh, that may cause us trouble in the future, I think the council need, we need to know that.
Jimmy, want me to respond? So councillor, you were correct that, uh, that, that, you know, the SCADA project had been part, had been on the, uh, on the books for, for some time now. And, uh, and so we're, we're on the go. It was actually part of the upgrade. Um, is, is, it's actually the newer system, uh, councillor, that, that, uh, that failed. Um, you know, and, and during the install, uh, we had tested and, and, and we thought everything was, was going to be good with it. Although, although we did find these, we found two issues that had to be corrected. Um, now, and when it comes to, to, to capital upgrades that are required on a regular basis, um, Anthony, who's the, the operations manager in Kirkland Lake, he provides, um, Jim with, uh, with a letter on an annual basis, um, talking about what our needs are for the, for the year coming up. And we try to predict to the best of our ability for the next five years coming up. So that councillor can be, council can be aware of what's, uh, what's on the horizon and can start the budget for what's on the horizon.
Thank you.
No further comments. Thank you, uh, gentlemen, for, uh, uh, bringing us up to date on the situation. And, uh, a big thank you to all the staff. Motion to receive?
Moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Casey Owens. Be it resolved that the verbal boil water advisory update be received?
Motion approved? Sorry. It is approved now. Motion carried. Item six point two, COVID nineteen, uh, vaccination policy, uh, miss?
Your worship, if I may, before we go to the next item, I just wanted to explain what happened there. Uh, my son, Brian Owen, is the waterworks foreman. I had not talked to him about, uh, the boil water order, so I had no idea that it had impacted his job. I believed it was, uh, an internal, um, issue within the water plant, which is operated under contract by Aqua. So that is why I did not declare pecuniary interest before the discussion. And that is why I got up and quietly, uh, informed you and then and informed, uh, our clerk that I was declaring. So I just wanted to explain to council and, and to the ratepayers, that's what I did. Thank you.
That was the correct thing to do. Thank you, councillor Owen. Okay, COVID nineteen, uh, vaccination policy update, Cassandra Young, HR supervisor. Welcome, Cassandra.
Thank you, your worship, and through you to council. Uh, so since our last regular meeting of council, which was on October nineteenth, staff have worked hard and created a vaccination policy to protect the health and safety of our employees, elected officials, contractors, volunteers and students. This policy was created by using the sample COVID nineteen vaccine policy from the support package that was provided by the Tomascoming Health Unit um, as a base. So in summary, the policy does not apply to EMS personnel responding to emergency calls in municipal facilities. It also does not apply to tech pioneer residents as they are mandated under the long-term care home COVID nineteen immunization policy. Um, further, as of December first, twenty twenty-one, all new hires of, uh, the town of Kirkland Lake will be required to be fully vaccinated as a condition of their employment. And all individuals of the town currently must be fully vaccinated or provide proof of medical exemption and complete an educational course and participate in rapid antigen testing or complete an educational course and participate in rapid antigen testing. So staff are open to answer any question. So staff are open to answer any questions regarding the attached policy and forms if needed.
Councillor White?
So Cassandra, I noticed that, um, in the report, there was no financial implications. Could you let us know why that is?
So this was a memo to council. So for the memo, we don't usually include financial implications. If it was a report, uh, that would have been considered.
Councillor White? Sorry, as a follow-up, um, does the town of Kirkland Lake pay for rapid testing? This is, sorry, I was not clear in my question.
So we, I believe, um, there is, and sorry, Bonnie might have to step in, but I believe we do get um, funding or there is an opportunity for municipal, uh, the municipality to be able to receive these rapid antigen testing at no cost.
Perfect. Thank you very much. That was all the clarification that was required.
Councillor Shaba?
Uh, yeah, a couple of things. One is, uh, a question. Uh, I'm not too sure how policy, uh, comes to life in this organization. Um, do, do, did you, uh, canvass, uh, opinion from the staff with the, to see what they have to say before you finalize this policy? You, is this something coming from the bottom up or this is what they're going to see, uh, once this is approved?
So this policy hasn't been circulated to staff at this point. That's just, uh, it's only being circulated at this point to you as council. Uh, once it is approved, then we would be circulating to all of our union members, um, and as well as our staff members. And the only reason I'm just pointing out union is because in some of our collective agreements, we have to actually provide the policy to the union before we can circulate it to the members.
My other question is in item number three, the scope, which is the second to the last paragraph, and you did talk about that, about new hires. Uh, and reading through this policy, uh, you did, uh, there, there is, there is an exemption for people with medical or whatnot. Uh, but then that paragraph itself is very, uh, you know, very straightforward, uh, to the point. All new hires must be fully that, that vaccinated against COVID nineteen as a condition of their employment. Uh, I would think that that one would be very, uh, to allow for people that might have exemption due to medical needs and all of that stuff. So that would, that way you won't put two people like that from being part of the, uh, uh, that, uh, employment. So I, I didn't see that there. I'm just worried about that, that it's going to be all or nothing coming in. Doesn't matter if you have any, uh, any medical reasons or not. Is there a way that could be really, uh, maybe, uh, re- rewarded to allow for that?
So I, I, um, I think that's a great comment. I, that's something that I think was probably overlooked. Um, what we could do is we could have further discussion if needed for that point. Did, um, any of my peers that helped me with this vaccination policy, did anyone have any comments regarding that as well?
Bonnie?
Thank you, your worship, through you to council. This is a common disclaimer or statement that has been in a number of different municipalities uh, policies. It certainly could be taken either way. So if council's wish is that any new hires also would have the ability to have, to submit a physician's note as well as education session or participate in rapid antigen testing, we absolutely could make that very clear in the policy. If that is council's wish, or council may wish to do what other municipalities have done and make it straightforward that all new hires um, do possess full vaccination. So that would be your, your choice at this time. And if you do notice on, um, the vaccination requirement on page three at the top, it does indicate that, um, the second paragraph alternatively individuals, and we could say that those are identified in the scope of the policy. So we could tweak the wording for whichever way you wish to see this policy move. And if we, if we wanted to do that, we could do that tonight so that you could pass it. If, if you're interested in passing this policy, whichever option is your preference.
Councillor Owens?
I personally like the policy the way it's written right now. It's a standard that's applied in many work settings. If you want to get hired anywhere, you need to, to show that you're, you're protected. Um, I forgot my second part. Uh, yeah, so, so I would be in favor, just know what, we leave it as it is. It's, uh, this is how it's presented to us. It goes into effect immediately. We pass it and, and there is an end date to this. If you read at the end of the policy completely, by March, when public measures come out or, uh, get relaxed by the provincial government, this will expire as well. And then if you want, if you choose to, to work for a town of Kirkland, you're not vaccinated, you can apply by then. Until then, I believe you should be vaccinated if you, uh, if you apply with the town.
Councillor Owen?
Yeah, I want to commend, uh, Ms. Young and, and whoever helped her on this policy. Um, I'm not in favor of forcing people to put things into their body that they choose not to, whether it's rational to me or not. Um, it, it doesn't matter. I've seen the effect this can have on a person's mental health when the employer forces them to, to get a vaccination and it's not good for the employee. But having said that, I'm very pleased that there is a sunset clause in there. And that depending on the COVID situation at the time of that sunset, council can extend it if, if the situation, um, is such that it has to be. Um, I would like to know the rationale, why there's the difference between current workers and new hires. Uh, my feeling is that we should hire the person best qualified for the job and that they should be treated the same way as every other employee of the town. And that for them to get the job, they would have to agree to abide by this policy. So I would like to know the rationale, why there's a difference.
So the, just the, to clarify, the difference is, um, this is what was used in many municipalities, but then there have also been other municipalities who haven't had that clause. Um, we've just followed what the Tamascooming Health Unit has given us and also looked at other municipality policies. Um, and as Bonnie mentioned, if that's something we're not looking to add, we can certainly amend it now and we can change it to not have that part included.
Councillor Owens?
I, I, the way I would see this is that there are employees. We have two hundred and, two hundred and twenty, two hundred and fifty employees with TPR. We owe them that. They choose to work for the town of Kirkland Lake every day. We give them options. You know, you don't want to take a vaccinations, you, you've got alternatives. I don't agree with it, but you know what? We owe them that. I don't owe, or we don't owe, I feel, a hire that same level of respect. Yeah, you may be qualified for the job. But until you're hired with the town of Kirkland Lake, you don't have the privilege of being protected by the policies of the town of Kirkland Lake. So again, I, I've said it before, I think it's very clear. You work for the town, these are the procedures. You want to work for the town? That's your option.
If I may add to that, uh, councillor Owens, I don't think this is discrimination in any way. And quite honestly, uh, when we post the position, uh, we can indicate right in that, that we must be vaccinated to be hired. That's my opinion. Councillor Owen?
Yeah, I still don't understand why we treat, as soon as we hire the person, there's an employee. In any case, I will be voting to support this policy. Um, largely because it's only a matter of a few months. Um, thank you.
Uh, councillor White?
If it's worth the explanation, uh, Rick, when a position is posted, you're entitled to put any requirement that you wish walking in the door. Just like we have CPR first aid for many of our employees. Or as a requirement of walking in the door, you need to be certified. But once you're in the door, we'll help you recertify. So it's along the same lines that walking in the door, we can have this all or nothing policy and after. Personally, I support policy as written. Um, it follows very well the package that we were given two weeks ago. Um, we are not health authorities sitting at this table, but we're very, very fortunate to be guided by appropriate health authorities. I say we pass the bylaw, uh, the policy as written. Thanks.
Councillor Shaba?
Yeah, I mean, I, um, I'm not, I'm not totally against this policy. And I know when people say that, well, when we're posting a position, we can write anything that we want. Uh, I think we have to be very careful because, uh, we can't write anything that we want, especially things that will infringe on people's fundamental human rights. So I, what, uh, my, the reason for my apprehension about this is that, uh, that, uh, I don't think that, uh, the new people have been, uh, afforded the same opportunity as people that already, uh, are working for us. And all I, all I'm more comfortable with is that sentence and, uh, all they have to look at is, oh, that is medically contraindicated for the new hires, then I'd be very happy. That way, when you have your new hires, if for some reason they cannot get vaccinated and they have that letter from their doctor saying that they cannot, they cannot, which is in our policy too for anybody in here. So I think it's incumbent upon us to consider that letter. And then that would be in lieu of, uh, uh, full vaccination. That's, that's, that's all I want. I'm not totally against sort of wholesale rejection of the policy. Uh, it's a matter of fairness for people, uh, not only that are in the institution or people that are coming behind it. People keep telling me when we do a an advert, you know, a job posting, we can write whatever we want. I mean, that would, uh, maybe in the fifties, you can write whatever you want. So you don't want this guy, this guy, this guy, this guy. I, 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 I think we have to be fair to people. I, 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 I'm, you know, I mean, you know, local president for thirty-two years, that is my job to protect everybody, that you're part of us or you're not part of us, you're coming in or you're not coming in, to make sure that you're coming in. As you're coming to that institution, your rights will be protected too. Because, I mean, that's how we take care of each other. All I want is to make sure that if your daughter or anybody else applied and they have their medical certificate from their doctor, say they can't get vaccinated, they can't be vaccinated because of medical needs, I think they should be seriously considered for that position and not to be excluded. So if the, if, if there's no willingness to amend that, uh, line, then I'm not going to render my vote in favor of this.
Councillor White?
I would actually like to call a point of order on councillor Shaba. I feel that he just insinuated by his comment about the fifties, uh, perhaps that I am acting inappropriately by saying whatever we want. I could go ahead and clarify what that means, but I think most members of the public and the members that are sitting at this table understood what I was saying and I really found that comment offensive.
Well, I would say my apology, I don't, I can't read your mind. I'm not insinuating what you mean. I'm not saying, uh, I don't know what you mean, but what I'm saying is that, uh, in this day and age, we, we really need to, uh, uh, to, to, uh, treat people equitably. It doesn't matter if they're working for us or they'll be working for us in a year's time or not. I just, this, there's, there is a part of that that I'm not comfortable with. Uh, so I'm not, uh, I'm not insinuating that you meant anything at all. Uh, what I'm saying is that we, the principle of fairness should prevail here. I mean, this is, I'm fully vaccinated, uh, you know. So, but again, it's my job to look out for people that cannot be vaccinated because they have underlying issues. And I don't think those people should be precluded from employment from town correctly, simple as that.
Uh, Patrick, sorry?
Yep. So, uh, as the probably only person with the career in safety on council and education in it, I was going to quote twenty-five two H of the Occupational Health and Safety Act, which is an employer shall take every reasonable precaution to ensure the safety of the workers. So while it's been proven that millions of people have died from being infected of COVID nineteen and all the medical professionals out there are saying that people need to be vaccinated, it is our duty as an employer to follow those recommendations and pass this vaccine policy to stop the spread of COVID nineteen and to ensure the safety of a workforce that would ensure that nobody would end up in a hospital being infected by COVID nineteen. The science is out there. It's our duty to be aware of it. And at, at this point, we need to accept the policy as it is. And, uh, if you need background information, check out Howard Levitt, Canada's top leading employment lawyer who created the rulebook. He has many articles in the National Post, Financial Post, and it's the duty of the employer to ensure that their people are vaccinated when they're working in close proximity with each other. We're doing this at the mine. This isn't my story on this one. Uh, vaccine policy needs to get passed. It's perfect as it is. Great work, staff.
I think we've had, whoop, sorry, councillor Owen?
Yeah, like I said, I'm voting in favor of the policy, but I do agree with that and it's certainly within all the provincial guidelines that people with medical exemptions uh, would be allowed. Um, medical exemptions are extremely hard to get from what I understand. There's only two conditions, two medical conditions from what I've seen in the media that are acceptable, um, by the province for not getting a vaccination. Um, but I still would like to see that in there. It's not the person's fault if they're, if they have a medical exemption. It's not like they're just saying, well, I'm going to ignore all the regulations and all the rules. They have a medical reason. And the, the province has made that very, very narrow in terms of getting that. So I, I personally would like to see it, but in any case, I think overall it's a great policy and I support it.
Yeah, uh, just one further comment and then we'll go to, uh, the motion. Uh, we've been, that, had this vetted, I believe through our solicitor. I know the Tamascooming Health Unit did. The Ministry of Health did. Uh, yes, it'll probably be somewhere around the, at some time that, uh, people are going to, uh, uh, challenge that. But, uh, I don't think we're doing anything wrong by, uh, accepting this policy as, uh, as proposed. So I would go to a motion.
So I have it moved by Stacy White, seconded by Patrick Adams. Be it resolved that memorandum number twenty twenty-one dash HR dash zero one five entitled COVID nineteen vaccination policy be received? That the COVID nineteen vaccination policy is hereby approved and that staff be directed to insert this policy into the corporate policy manual.
All in favor? Opposed? Six to one. Motion carried.
Have a question, sir?
Yes.
Who do we give our certificates to?
It will be flowing through the health and safety coordinator.
I'm leading by example. Here's my copy of my certificate.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, item, uh, six point three outstanding taxes as of October the twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, Darlene Peever, our tax collector.
Good evening.
Welcome, Darlene.
Good evening.
Yeah, can you hear us, Darlene?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, you're good to go.
Okay. But why I'm here tonight? Because council, mayor and councils have some questions for the tax department. The questions were properties with outstanding taxes of more than one year is 121. Properties with outstanding taxes more than two years is and properties with outstanding taxes of three years or more are 126. Currently this year in 2021, there's been no registration started. There's been no rental income seized in 2021. And the last question was there, how many property owners have delinquents accounts with more than one property? There's 108 property owners in that situation. So are there any questions?
Counselor Ivanov?
Yeah, Darlene, is there a policy regarding tax collection on those properties? I mean, I, I, when I, this bothers me because, you know, when you're looking at $3 million in outstanding taxes and we have 108 property owners that have delinquent taxes and they owe more than one property and I assume they're collecting rents. I'm not, I'm not positive that's what's happening, but that would be my concern. I, I wouldn't want to know the individual or who the individuals are. But I, I mean, you'd obviously would. And the fact, you know, there's three or more, 126 properties. That again, concerns me. And I mean, if I got to pay my taxes and somebody says, I'm just not going to pay them. And there's, I mean, if I, if I went down and said four, five, six and seven years, I'm sure you have people that fall into that category and taxes just haven't been collected. I can't imagine somebody sitting at Tim Hortons one day and saying, I haven't paid taxes for seven years. And guess what? Nobody's bothered me. So why are you? And that just creates a whole snowball effect where eventually, why would anybody pay taxes and not be forced to, you know, either give up their properties or I mean, I, it just, it, it really does bother me. Thank you.
That's, it's certainly unfair that the people that are paying, they're carrying the load. And that's not the answer. I'm just curious, what do you handle all the collections yourself, Darlene?
Yes, pretty much, pretty much. There is no collection policy right now. But it's my understanding, there's one in the process. It's going to be ready really soon. The 108 properties, it can be a little misleading. Not everybody who has two properties has a rental unit. Because I couldn't really decipher, you know, I'd have to do a really in-depth study, but some people have two properties because they may have a home and they may have a vacant lot beside them. So the 108 is a little bit misleading in that respect. But rent seizures, they're a little bit tricky. Very labor intensive. I have done rent seizures here in Kirkland Lake before. And I've gone to several tax meetings with other municipalities and I've never heard of anybody else who's done rent seizures. When I told them that we did it, they're actually kind of surprised. But it is, it's, it's tricky and it's very labor intensive. The municipal act has kind of changed a little bit over the years. Now we can start registering properties after two years in arrears. And that is usually the best route to go. But living in a small town, being a tax collector for a long time, all those kinds of things are really a last resort thing. I really believe in sending notices, reaching out to the people, talking to people. There, I have not met very many people who have said, I just don't want to pay my taxes.
I think I understand what you're saying, but I look at it as if, if I was a landlord and you weren't paying your rent, I wouldn't be waiting three years for you to sit in that apartment. And that we have to have some policy and procedure, procedures, at least in place to, to follow up. There is no way one person can handle 350 collection accounts. I've, I've worked in banking and finance company now on collections. And it's impossible for one person to make that many calls and follow up. So we have to put a system in place where we can put a stop to this and keep it from ballooning. And that's, that's a big concern because it's like Counselor Ivanov said, once people get to know they're going to hold back as much as they are. And these investment properties, we're not their banker. They're using us. They're using our money. But we need to run the town.
Yeah, I mean, I would think, sorry, Darlene, I like, and I'm not, I understand this is a lot of work for somebody to do. And so I'm, you probably need help and I'm not, so don't. I'm not being critical. I'm just saying that, you know, if somebody can't afford one year's taxes, they certainly can't afford two. And if then if they can't afford two, they can't, they, you know, it does snowball and, you know, eventually you end up with a whole bunch of non-paid taxes for, for years and years because it's like rent, you know, if you owe somebody a thousand bucks one month and then you owe them 2,000, then all of a sudden where do you find the money to do that? So now I understand where, you know, and I don't want to be hard on people. I, you know, if somebody comes back to you and says, you know, you've got to have a bit of a heart. I can, I kind of get that. It's, but the same time, there has to be a policy in place that doesn't allow people to get away from paying taxes. You know, for three years or longer after that, I, you know, or two years as the municipal act says. So, you know, and I, I know you're, this is a lot of work. And I understand you can't do it all by yourself. And if you need help, then I guess we should be talking to, I guess your upper management and see what they can do to help you try and collect this because it's substantial amount of money. It's not like we can't afford to spend money on another assistant to the tax collector because this amount of money is, it's a huge amount. Anyway, thank you.
Counselor Shaba?
Yeah, thank you very much, Darlene. I recall, I guess it was a report came to the council. I guess Counselor White, you asked for how much back taxes, something like $3 million or something in that ballpark. I'm not, so maybe you can let us know because all of this, there's, there's money attached to all of this at the end of the day that we don't have to help run the municipality. But my question to you is, how long can people be behind in their taxes before the municipality can take action? Three years, five years or, or maybe they can get around that by maybe paying $10 out of a tax of $1,000 pay a dollar, a dollar a year or something. So not to, to just to, to not get caught or get their property confiscated or repossessed. So how long do they have to be behind? I don't know. Before we do something. Because we've got a lot of numbers here of people that are not paying their taxes. Thank you.
Yes, that's correct. And you're right. It is 3.2 million. We start sending out letters in the very first year, in the current year, which is not showing on here. But we, we send out letters to, to current year. Well, anybody with arrears and the, the person cannot pay $1 just to stave off registration or anything. If you have taxes in the two-year column, I'd say, your property is eligible for registration. I've collected taxes for a long time in other municipalities as well. You really do need to have, as you say, a standard, a process. And most definitely, after a person is no longer in current year taxes, you really have to start the process. Tax reg, you want to avoid tax registration. The one thing that I am doing right now is from working in other municipalities, Kirkland Lake is behind because we do not offer pre-authorized payments, monthly pre-authorized payments. So I've got all the paperwork in place, trying to hopefully get that in place very soon. Things are changing. Things are changing. Banks are, there's already now two banks that don't offer the service of paying taxes. So we really have to implement that as quickly as possible. The goal is to stop tax arrears before they get to two in three years in arrears. Because the tax registration, it's costly. Nobody wants to take anybody's home. But we, the goal is not to let it get that far. And pre-authorized payments is going to be one avenue that's, I hope is going to be really helpful.
But you have three years or more here, 126. So when you say three years or more, so some people could be five years in that more category. But then at what point do we start to get that, that, that number down? By at least go after these people or take whatever legislative, legislative power that we can take or municipal power that we can take because you're 126, three years or more. So again, I don't know what the cutoff number of years, maybe I missed that in your answer. I don't know what the cutoff is. If you don't pay after three years, you're behind three years. Well, bye-bye, you know, I don't know.
Well, that's, when you, when you're in that category, yes, that's when, and, and a bit of a process before you actually do registration. You, you send a registered letter, you notify interested parties. You, you do those things before you actually take the step to register the property. As you say, one person, when you have 100 and some to try and collect, it's, it's really tricky. You have to, I almost have to do them in batches. Because you can't, I can't do 126 all at one time. There are, there's, there's some companies that you can get to help you manage the tax sale because it can get tricky. And so that's helpful, but you still have to do a lot of the work, a lot of the counting, keep track over time, whatnot. But the tax registration, once you start, it's about a year, a little over a year process before you get to the end of it all. So to see this 126 come down, it's going to take us probably a year if we get on it right.
One suggestion, like from a legal standpoint, if we have to get a lawyer to, you know, to register the property and all that. There are independent paralegals that work on their own, that could do this work a lot more reasonably priced and probably at a, at a higher volume. Because once you're tied up doing that, obviously then we're not collecting, you're doing administration. Part of the collection process, I realize that, but I think that's one thing to consider. At one time, we did look at a firm to look at doing that and they were, the price was outrageous. But they, they really didn't want to do all the administration. They just wanted to file the, the documents for you. That's, that's only part of the job, as you said, it's, it's a process.
Yeah.
Sorry, go ahead, Darlene.
I was just going to say, and kind of aged myself a little bit, but some years ago, we took on a lot of tax registration, myself with an assistant, and we were able to do it in-house. And we, we got quite a few, quite a few done. And, and we brought the arrears down quite substantially in that time. So it's, it's not impossible. But tax registration, each property, you could add maybe about $3,000 onto the additional addition to the taxes. And if that place, if it doesn't sell, then, you know, that's cost you $3,000. I mean, you have to do it, but sometimes when it's in-house, that you can do it just a tad more affordable.
Counselor Owen?
Yeah, hi Darlene. For my own clarification and for the great players clarification, most of us fortunately have not been in a tax registration situation. So I, I really don't understand the process of how that works. I mean, you said, you let out a little bit, you send a registered letter to the, to the property owner prior to registering the property. When you register the property, what does that mean? Does that mean the town can owns it? Or does that mean the town can sell it for the price of the back taxes? I, I really don't understand the process.
Okay, it, it quite, quite briefly is if a person has taxes in their two and three years in arrears and if I've done the best I can to try and collect the money and I can't, then we will register a tax arrear certificate. And that tax arrear certificate on that date, let's say January 1st, that is notice to the property owner that we intend to take this property back after one year and sell it for our tax money. And when we register that tax arrear certificate on January 1st, a letter is sent to any interested party. It could be a mortgage holder, it could be a lien holder, it could be a spouse. It could be a public trustee, anybody who might have an interest in that party. Everybody's notified. So they're given the opportunity. Everybody's given the opportunity of one full year to redeem that property. If nobody comes up with any money that wants to claim that property after one year, we will then prepare all the information on the property, we'll put it up for tender and the minimum bid on that tender will be the taxes that we're owing plus all of the costs for us to get it to that point. And, and then we just wait for tenders to come in and the highest bidder is normally the one who gets to take that property. If nobody bids on that property, what will happen is, is that the town, if they decide they can invest that property, we will lose our tax money. But one benefit of that is we don't lose it all because part of it is school board taxes and we can charge back the school board taxes. So.
Just a question of clarity. In a situation like that and during the year, a person makes a really good effort to, to try and catch up, but they don't get all the way there. Is there room for you not to proceed? Like on a promise that they will pay and like, is, is there leeway there for the tax collector?
Absolutely. What happens is, is you register that, register that tax arrear certificate. Everybody's notified. This is what's going to happen. If somebody wants to, if the homeowner wants to come forward and say, I need time. I do want to pay this. I can't pay it all right now. I uh I do wanna pay this, I can't pay it all right now, I wanna make payments, then they would enter into an extension agreement. The extension agreement oftentimes goes before council, council has to approve it. And then the person would have to stick to that payment schedule. If the, if a payment is missed, then it goes right back into the tax sale situation.
Okay, and I just, I just wanna add that I uh, I really feel for you that there is no policy on this. I think that's something that definitely has to be corrected. It puts undue pressure on our tax collector when there's no policy to follow concerning these issues.
Yeah, if I may comment, uh Darlene, I know this is uh you, you inherited this uh situation. So it's not a reflection on you. Some of these uh three-plus years go back probably closer to ten years. Uh prev- some previous council, uh council uh counselors uh agreed that uh during, there was some difficult times in Kirkland Lake that they would not take back houses and throw people out of their homes. And uh, but yeah, it it uh was coming from the heart, but it's, it's created a problem. And uh it just got snowballed and got to the mess that it's in right now. But uh councillor Owens, no? Uh councillor White.
So thank you for your report and your explanations. You made mention that there is a policy upcoming. Who is writing that policy currently and when can, and when can council expect that to come to council table? Unfortunately, though it is our role to pass policy, unless staff brings it to our table, we're also powerless until the wording is brought to us. So when will that be brought to us?
I think it's gonna come to you very soon. It is being um uh reviewed by the deputy treasurer uh and the uh performance measures accountant here. We have a new director coming as well and I think that they want to um have maybe some of his input and uh, but it's very close, it's very close.
Any further comments? I, thanks Darlene for the update. We look forward to having some policies and procedures in place. And I think with the new uh treasurer and a new director coming in that uh we can uh probably move this forward as near closer to the top of the list and priorities because it's uh, it's, it's getting worse every, every year. Despite our efforts. Hope there's no further comments. We have a motion to accept the report.
Moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Casey Owens. Be it resolved, that memorandum number twenty twenty-one dash fin dash zero zero five entitled Properties With Outstanding Taxes as of October twelfth, twenty twenty-one be received.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item uh six point four. Was that one of your years, Rick? Or Patrick? I'm so old, Patrick, it was okay, he's gone. Six point four, uh request to purchase various municipal surplus lands. Ken McNorton, planning administrator.
Thank you, Your Worship, through you to council. Um I do have a report that is requesting to present a couple of bylaws for land sales. So I'll start with part of six hundred Archer Drive. Um staff did receive an offer to purchase a portion of the land at the corner of Main Street and Archer Drive in order to establish a private distribution station. Um so the proponent has proposed a purchase price of a dollar thirty-five per square foot and they're looking at approximately forty thousand square feet. The area is located in the light industrial zone, it's in close proximity to the Hydro One Services. The, the proponent is working with the Skidoo Club to ensure that the access for their snowmobile trail is retained as per the town's easement agreement. Um so at, for this one, I am looking for a direction to declare this property as surplus and to present a bylaw once the survey has been completed to sell the land at the dollar thirty-five per square foot. Uh okay, the second property I have is One Government Road East. After Darlene's done and said with her properties, we, this property went through a tax sale in twenty nineteen and we did not receive any bids. So we subsequently vested this property into our name. Um the proponent owns the apartment building adjacent to it at Three Government Road East and they are looking at um purchasing this property to establish parking. Uh currently, this uh building does not have any parking spaces. Um so by providing this, we can um give more opportunities for apartment rentals that have a parking option. And this property was um uh requested at fifteen thousand to Blue Marble Logistics. Uh the third property is a vacant piece of land on Water Lane. Um the, again, this is a property that the proponent is looking to use as a parking lot. Um the owner has the apartment building at fifty-two Government Road West. Uh this lot was listed in a tax sale, uh no bids were received and we vested this property into our name and declared it surplus. We haven't had any interest or bids on this one. Um it is part of the commercial zone, which is um the town center commercial zone, but the lot is vacant and undersized, so it wouldn't be suitable for building. And the use of a parking lot would be compatible under the zoning bylaw as well. And then the, the last one that I have is a, a sale of a portion of laneway. This one we brought to council a while back and they were just waiting to have the survey complete. Um so it's part one fifty-four R sixty-one eighty to Ryan and Ashley Morissette. Um so that was, the direction was provided back in April um that we could proceed with passing the bylaw. So I um, I could take any questions if there are any for these lots.
None, none noted.
Okay, so moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Stacy White. Be it resolved, that report number twenty twenty-one dash dev dash zero five zero entitled Request To Purchase Various Municipal Surplus Lands Be Received. That part of six hundred Archer Drive is hereby declared surplus land. That staff be directed to provide notice of intent to sell part of six hundred Archer Drive. That staff be directed to prepare and present bylaws to council to authorize the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake to enter into an agreement of purchase and sale to sell the following properties. Part of six hundred Archer Drive to Kirkland Lake Gold Inc. for one dollar thirty-five cents per square foot. One Government Road East to Blue Marble Logistics for fifteen thousand. Parcel five one nine four CST Water Lane to two two four seven seven five three Ontario Inc. For five thousand dollars and part one five four R six one eight zero to Ryan and Ashley Morissette for eight ninety-nine forty-six cents.
All in favor? Motion carried. Uh item uh six point five, two thousand twenty-two Roma Conference attendance and delegation requests.
Thank you, Worship, through you to council. Um presenting this memo today to see if there is an interest in attending the Roma Conference for twenty twenty-two. Um it is being held January twenty-third to twenty-fifth and it's being held virtually. We are recommending that if you do wish to attend, that we could uh just register Mayor Kylie, for instance, and have one login and do our typical boardroom setup and do something along those lines. Um and then also, if there is a interest to submit delegation requests, which is part of um the biggest part of the conference, they are due to be submitted by November fifteenth. So we would have to kind of finalize what we're looking to submit here tonight. So uh we discussed with the management team a couple items for consideration. Uh so the three that we just wanted to put out there is possibly requesting dollars for municipal uh infrastructure upgrades, specifically hard services, roads, water, sewer to support um economic development. Requesting further information on the hiring of long-term care inspectors and building local slash regional capacity to deal with the opioid and addiction crisis. I'll put it to the floor for discussion and any questions.
What's the cost of that uh?
I believe, uh so it's, it's either four fifty or five fifty, if I can find it in here, and it's just based on if you're a member, so four fifty. So I believe it counts as a member. I think if you're an AMO member, it's like an extension of AMO, so I believe we'd be at four fifty. And um since it's a twenty twenty-two item, um I've confirmed with treasury that it would be not processed until kind of the twenty twenty-two budget, or it would hit the twenty twenty-two budget.
Okay. I think it's uh, th- those three uh priority items that you mentioned are well worth uh attending and and getting our message out and uh getting further information as well. So I, I would support that. Any other thoughts, councillors? We have a motion.
You do, I'm just going to amend it, one second here. Okay, so I have it moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Patrick Adams. Be it resolved, that memorandum number twenty twenty-one dash CLK dash zero two four M entitled twenty twenty-two Roma Conference attendance and delegation request be received. And that staff be directed to register Mayor Kylie for the twenty twenty-two Roma Conference and submit delegation requests included in this report.
All in favor? Motion carried. Uh item six point six, two thousand twenty-two municipal election.
Thank you, Worship, through you to council. So I wanted to um put out the feelers for council of how we want to go about the twenty twenty-two municipal election. There have been some amendments to the municipal act which helped to um I would say push this process because typically I would have had to have done this May of this year, so I would have had to have clarification by the beginning of the year. But now it can be May of the election year. Um as well as they've moved the nomination day and they've pushed um the date for when you have to have your procedures. So included in the report, I tried to give some background of uh the different ways that you can hold an election and some pros and cons to each. So in twenty eighteen and I'm assuming from, because the bylaw that's in place is from two thousand six, so I'm assuming we've been using the tabulator way since then. Um so that's what has been previously done. But there is um the option of maybe shifting to the internet and telephone voting, which of course would have a lot of positives with our pandemic world as well as general accessibility. So I wanted to um put it out there for discussion. I've recommended the motion that we don't have to decide tonight, that you can if you'd like. But um I would recommend maybe thinking on it a little bit, reaching out to the constituency, what everyone's thinking. Maybe if you have any other further questions, you need um more information, you can ask me, I can try to supply as much as possible. Um I do wanna note from my experience in twenty eighteen, the election that I was working was internet and telephone. So that is the most experience that I do have. Um budget-wise, it's a little bit hard to say exactly what it would end up being. So I know that it would be based on your number of voters and you would have to issue an RFP and see what kind of companies are interested. I did touch base with the municipality I used to work at and they told me, and it's a similar tax base size. And they said uh twenty eighteen, it was around forty grand. So I will.
Correct me, correct me if I'm wrong, Megan, but I, I think our existing program uh that we used was our total cost during the election was about twenty-eight thousand, but I'm, I'm not positive on that.
It looks like that from speaking with treasury and pulling all the records. Um I was very surprised by that because usually it's a cost saver with reducing the amount of um election workers and labor costs. So um I don't totally know how everything has been done previously, so I am still educating myself on all those steps. But even if we did go the tabulator way, I, I would assume that the cost could probably increase even just for the fact of managing the voters' list. Because I would try to, there's a certain software that you can get that's really helpful and I don't think that they previously utilized that. So there might be additional cost just for process for ease of my knowledge.
Okay, uh councillor Adams.
Yeah, when we were first elected, our uh previous clerk put out a bunch of recommendations on our first day of council as to amendments to be proposed to be considered for the next bylaw. So maybe for the next meeting, we can uh maybe bring that, those recommendations forward. Uh as for putting it out there for constituents, I'm in favor of actually having this uh agenda item be changed to have staff reach out through their social media. That way, instead of two councillors who use social media to put it out, uh the town can do it and we can get more feedback. Uh those are my two recommendations for this, but I'm, I'm okay to vote as is.
Uh Patrick, are you referring to, to information to the, the website for the town or or?
They can do social media, whatever they need to do. I'm not sure how we're going to do it through uh social media uh or reach out to our constituents. But for our clerk, our previous one in twenty eighteen, when we were first elected, the agenda item was recommendations to the proposed bylaw to make it easier based on observations.
Well, I think it does lead to a higher, higher voter turnout. And especially as mentioned by councillor White, the, the fact of COVID and all the other uh things happening uh these days, uh it's, it's not a bad idea, it's certainly worth looking at. So I agree, I think we should see what we can do to get further information and come back, but I, I would support it as well.
So just if I'm um understanding correctly, it, it looks like there could be a, a want to maybe look at the internet and telephone way and we're looking to put it out there and see what uh the feedback is?
I would love to see an RFP, go see what the cost is gonna be and, I mean, even if it costs more, you know, I, I would, if, if your numbers are correct and it's forty thousand as opposed to twenty-eight thousand, I think that's uh well, a well-deserved spend on a, on an election that people can actually vote at.
Yeah, I think traditionally, our voter turnout was in the fifty-two percent range. So uh you know, if you got that up to sixty or seventy percent, it certainly would be a, a better take for the town and uh represent the people. Uh councillor Owen.
Yeah, I'm assuming that a traditional vote, like if I wanted to go in and vote at the tabulator like I always have, that I would have that option too. Like I just, I'm assuming that and I think that's the way it's run in other places, but I wanna make sure
Yeah.
that that option still i- is available.
So from a staff's perspective, there's definitely positives to that, of course. But it is a lot more work, that would be two elections in one. Because you have to have full procedures for every step. So that would be all the money and all the steps of the tabulator way, all the money and all the steps of the internet way and you'd be doing it together. So at the moment, with the idea that I'd be recommending is that it, that wouldn't be an option, there wouldn't be paper. But with my previous, previous experience, what we did was we set up a room. It could be council chambers or it could be a different location and you make it sort of like a help center. So that if people want to feel that they can go and vote somewhere, they come and see us and they just do it on an iPad. And uh the previous location I worked, I swear, every single person that came in was, I don't know how to do this. They sat down, we said, you do this, this, oh, that was it, that was easy, and then they leave and they're excited. So there's that, um as well as, one of the big positives that I really liked about um doing internet telephone is you can decide a voting period, so it's not just one day. So it's not just one day and then maybe like two days of advanced polls. It can be like a ten day period where the voting is available twenty-four seven. So people for the shift workers or people that are out of town or people that, you know, maybe they're at home one day and they don't have access to their internet till the next day, like it's very open and accessible for them to have a large window of time.
Counselor Shaba.
Yeah, Megan, correct me, the way I I'm reading this from page sixty-six of one twenty-five, the last paragraph. I think that's what councillor was trying to refer to. I I maybe I'm reading it wrong. If I read the second, the last of that paragraph, if council wishes to utilize an alternative method of voting for two thousand twenty-two, so which means that we wish to go with the telephone and internet. Then the the other option that was used in the previous election would not be there anymore, right? Is that correct?
Basically, yes, but if you chose that you did want it to be both, you can do that.
Well, yeah, okay, we're looking at demographics and I really appreciate getting more people to to precipitate in democratic process. And over the last elections or more so, it doesn't matter, federal, municipal, provincial, younger people are not really very much engaged. So and and the internet and what might be something that might really get them engaged. But at the same time too, we have to realize that as an aging community too, there are a lot of senior citizens that may not be pretty much versatile in technological know-how, whatnot. So I I will suggest that for now, we try both and see how it goes, maybe next election, then we could move on to the internet and telephone. Because people have to, can decide to vote the old way of, so well, let's if we show you how to vote this way, how about that? So I I think that option should be available to people that might not have enough, like not even see what an iPad is, not know what an iPad is. I mean, so that's, that's, that's what I will want to go, want to recommend. And also too, accessibility is always very important as well, that we have people my wheelchair and whatnot, as long as whatever it is, whatever it is that we're going to do the option, then directly accessible to people in need of accessibility. People that have wheelchairs or whatnot.
Councillor White.
I would like to go ahead and motion that we follow the clerk's suggestion that this item be deferred until next meeting. So that members of staff, as councillor Adams suggested and councillors, as Madam Clerk suggested, can do outreach in the next two weeks and find out what our constituents would like. We can all sit here and guess, but until we actually engage members of the public, we don't know. So taking two more weeks to reach out would be the best bet for all of us.
So I did have a mover as, I had the mover as Patrick Adams and seconded by Casey Owens. So would both of you be agreeable to add language in there to say, have it as is? And then I'm going to add, you have counsel for decision and to allow time for staff to reach out to the community and receive their feedback. Sorry, I can read that again. I was just typing it. So I would say that this report be referred to the November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one regular meeting of council for a decision and to allow time for staff to reach out to the community and receive their feedback.
I am okay with that, as long as like if we are going to talk about the bylaw, we take those recommendations from twenty eighteen. Because there's nothing being told, nothing worse than being told about a problem and not changing it.
I guess I'm just confused on, maybe I'll have to look for the report, but.
Yeah, it was shortly after we got elected. John had brought us some, what had worked, what didn't work and recommendations for down the road, but it just got down the road and we're down, we're at, got that road.
Further down the road, yeah.
It was within the first few meetings, so it'd be probably December two thousand eighteen or January two thousand nineteen. It was very, very early on.
So I will look for that and hopefully I'll be able to find it and attach it as well for the next meeting. For just looping back to councillor Ivanoff's comment, I'd have to touch base with our procurement coordinator about, I don't know if you want to put out an RFP just for the information, like maybe it would just be like for quotes instead, something like that. Yeah, we'll do that just because there is a lot of legwork with that process itself. Yeah. So even though it discusses about the bylaw being passed in May, I definitely would love a decision before we get into twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, because then the procedures need to be done by June. So and those are very like inclusive, so I would need a lot of time to just know which way I'm going and get everything in order. So. Okay, great. So I have moved by Patrick Adams, seconded by Casey Owens. Here is all that report number twenty twenty-one dash C L K dash zero two five entitled twenty twenty-two municipal election be received. And that this report be referred to the November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one regular meeting of council for a decision and to allow time for staff to reach out to the community and receive their feedback.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item seven, seven point one, consideration of notices of motion. We have councillor White has a notice of motion. We require a seconder. Seconded by councillor Shaba.
So I don't know how much discussion this needs. This came about from discussions last meeting with Director Haas. I believe it was twenty twelve that this idea had been floated with previous councils. And I believe it should come to this council as well, considering we're on the cusp of great economic diversity within the town, that we should definitely have staff bring back a report on the possible benefits and the role and economic development corporation within the town of Kirkland Lake. So I don't know if there really needs to be any discussion at this point. But basically what I'm asking for is staff to bring back why, what an ED corporation does and why it would benefit the town of Kirkland Lake.
I believe that would eliminate the Economic Development Committee. But it'd be similar nature only incorporated and the town would assist in funding it and providing promotion of economic development within the community. So it's a, a lot of communities have gone that route. And I think we need to, obviously there's opportunities here, the last couple, well, last year anyway. And going forward, there are some opportunities that I think we have to work on more in depth. So I think that would be assistance. Councillor Shaba.
Yeah, I'm I don't know if I can add anything to this accept to see if we can get best practices from other towns of our size. I mean, maybe we do have something like it's in this motion and how it's going or whatnot, just so maybe do a little bit of comparative analysis before we.
Yeah, I I believe councillor Shaba that capus casing has a corporate economic development corporation. I'm not positive on that, but I believe they are, they do. I'm sorry, Patrick.
Uh, yeah, just a recommendation to councillor White, if we were to put a due date on there, that would stop the possibility of this being presented to the next term of council.
Any further comments, councillor White?
So that is a valid point councillor Adams, and I do believe I would like to add the suggestions from councillor Shaba as well, Madam Clerk, if we could have the motion read. That staff shall be directed to bring back a report by November, January thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. On the possible benefits and role of an economic development corporation within the town of Kirkland Lake, including best practices from other municipalities for comparative analysis.
So I have moved by Stacy White, seconded by Lad Shaba. Let staff be directed to bring back a report by January thirtieth, twenty twenty-two on the possible benefits and role of an economic development corporation within the town of Kirkland Lake, including best practices from other municipalities for comparative analysis.
No further comments? All in favor? Motion carried. Item number eight, introduction reading and consideration of bylaws. Madam Clerk.
Okay, a few bylaws this evening. First one moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Rick Owen. Be resolved that the following bylaw be ready first, second and third time. Numbered pass signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-one dash zero eight nine, being a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute documents related to the sale of one government road east to Blue Marble Logistics.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Second bylaw moved by Eugene Ivanoff's, or moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Patrick Adams. Be resolved that the following bylaw be ready first, second and third time. Numbered pass signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-one dash zero nine zero, being a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute documents related to the sale of property located adjacent to forty-six George Street to Ryan and Ashley Morissette.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Item eight point three, moved by Casey Owens, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff. Be resolved that the following bylaw be ready first, second and third time. Numbered pass signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-one dash zero nine one, being a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute documents related to the sale of parcel five one nine four CST Water Lane to two two four seven seven five three Ontario Inc.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Eight point four, moved by Stacy White, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff. Be resolved that the following bylaw be ready first, second and third time. Numbered pass signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-one dash zero nine two, being a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute an agreement with Peterson Construction twenty thirteen Inc. For the kale gold water and sewer servicing and Chappie Hughes distribution upgrades.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Eight point five, moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Casey Owens. Be resolved that the following bylaw be ready first, second and third time. Numbered pass signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-one dash zero nine three, being a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute a transfer pay agreement with the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing for funding through the municipal modernization program intake two.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Eight point six, moved by Patrick Adams, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff. Be resolved that the following bylaw be ready first, second and third time. Numbered pass signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-one dash zero nine four, being a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute an agreement with the Ontario Northland Transportation Commission for license to cross below the railway tracks at Swastika with the proposed sanitary sewer.
All in favor? Motion carried. Any questions from submitted from council?
I have a few questions here. Sorry, just going to get to that page. We have a question from councillor Owen and then a few questions from councillor Adams. And I believe they are all relating to the fire chief. If we do have Mr. Adair on the line to join us.
Are you going to read the questions or do you just want me to answer?
Councillor Owen, you're up first if you'd like to.
Yeah, a while back, we authorized the purchase of a new used ladder truck for the fire department, one that would fit within the confines of our current fire hall. And I was just looking for an update on whether we've had a luck in coming up with prices, because we gave you a pretty open-ended budget to work with. So I just like to make sure that project's still on track. Thank you.
Yes, I wanted to have it ready for this council meeting, but I was unexpectedly off last week and I can definitely have it ready for the next meeting.
Yeah, that's good for me. I just wanted to make sure it didn't get lost in the shuffle like some things do. So thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick follow-up on that one. While we're, it's attached to the fire truck, is, can we attach the, what is going to happen to the old fire truck? That's sitting behind physical services right now with the bucket pointing down? Like I'm, yeah.
Yes, I can add that to the report.
Thank you.
Yep, so just, I wasn't able to attend the last meeting due to career commitments. And I was surprised to read in the CBC that there was some surprise over the fire hazards related to Chappie Hughes. So just kind of laying out that we were kind of informed about this and are should be aware that there is a real fire hazard to our community. And the solutions rely on the fire master plan that we had paid for. And then we paid another consultant to tell us that we need to implement it. So we do have a motion out there passed by council to have this brought back and and with recommendations. So if we're able to get that, you don't need to answer these questions, but if we can just get a report back on where we're at with the implementation of it and what we need to do as council to ensure the completion of this. As we do need to track and measure, because what you don't measure, you can't manage. And as our full as council and policy, we need to manage these, these big things. Yes, I can make a report on on this too for next council as well. That's greatly appreciated. Thank you, Rob. Thank you.
But sorry, Megan, I sent my question in, is that for next time or this time? Next time.
Yes, councillor Shaba, we can, we can take questions on the floor, but we just, we, we can't have any discussion about them. So if you wanted to announce what your question is, we can do that or I can just add it to the agenda. Yeah, we just, we're not able to discuss anything that's not listed on the agenda. So.
Yeah, I was, I would do that. I sent a question in today. Pretty exciting to see all the construction there. A first main from Chappie Hughes, from Swastika to Chappie Hughes. And I do know that a lot of the businesses and homes along that highway, they are on septic system. So my question is that upon completion of this first main, is there any consideration or any action plan on our part to tie those people in to our system? Down the road, that's it?
Okay, we'll bring that back to the next meeting with some information on that regards. Thank you, councillor Shaba.
So we can receive the questions. I have it moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Patrick Adams. Be resolved that the questions from council be received.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item number ten, notices of motion. None noted. Item eleven, councillors' reports.
I think there are a lot of people complimented the issuing the Chappie Hughes, and they're really very impressed that
And they're really, very impressed that it's best to be a a member of the council. So, and, you know, thanks for bringing that forward. It's been a long time in the making. So chat, I have to say that.
Yeah, no, it was, it was a ratepayers that mentioned it to me, so I'm not going to take credit for that. Thank you.
I don't, I don't know who mentioned that to you, but I'm just asked to pass it on that.
Interesting councillor Shaba, because when I checked my phone messages today, there was two from Chappie residents in the village and they said exactly what you said. They appreciated the fact that council is moving ahead to solve this problem.
Yeah, yeah. I would do a CBC too, I think, CBC, what's his name, someone's on CBC or CTV about this, so. Well, we'll see what happens.
Well, I, there's a bit of a concern too, I think, maybe councillor Adams was hinting at or pointed out there's, this could, if we don't take any action, this could be a liability issue for the town. But more concerned about the health and safety of the people out there. And they've been practically begging for years to get this thing straightened out. So I'm glad we're going to move forward with this. Any other comments? Oh, had the opportunity of discussing with President Audrey Penner at the college the other day. I'm going to meet with her and to get the data, don't have in front of me, but for lunch, but there are some really good things coming across that they've applied toward, but I think it's going to be a benefit to the, to the college and to the community itself and local industry. So hopefully we can get further news on that in the short term.
Yeah, I guess that was a good presentation today by a group of people and that's what very nice. And hopefully we can somehow have the staff to work that in into their plan for future. Particularly this issue of the station in Swastika. So I think we have to make a convincing argument for Northland, that hey, things will be happening in the future. So, so I'm really very happy to hear about what's happening in Upper Beaver and, and I think that the town should really capitalize on that and plan. I mean, you see they're planning, you see they're planning right there, laid out. So I think we should some, I mean,
Good point.
It's nice to see, it's nice to.
Yeah, I think you and I attended that telephone conference with Mr Haas with the owner, president, and we should be due for an update soon. And we'll certainly bring that back up because it's a good point. We're looking to the future and hopefully we are going to have a growing population. We have slowly, but once we get a, as we discussed earlier, all of council would like to see some kind of a plan in place for housing development and social housing, not necessarily social housing, but reasonable housing alternatives for, for people coming to Kirkland Lake. So the bus transportation is, is part of the whole system as well and rail. Any further comments? None noted.
Moved by Casey Owens, seconded by Stacy White, be resolved that the verbal updates from members of council be received.
All in favor? Motion carried. We have a motion to move into in camera.
Moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Rick Owen, be resolved that council move into a closed session pursuant to section two thirty-nine two to discuss two matters relating to land disposition and one matter relating to labor relations and personal matters of an identifiable individual.
All in favor? Motion carried. A little short recess. Okay, we have a motion to arise from closed into an open regular meeting of our council. Are there any matters from closed session to discuss?
We have.
Or motions?
We have an appointment bylaw for a chief administrative officer. So be it resolved that the following bylaw be ready first, second and third time, numbered pass signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-one dash zero nine seven, being a bylaw to appoint Alan Smith as the chief administrative officer and authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the employment agreement.
All in favor? Motion carried unanimously. Confirmation bylaw?
Moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Patrick Adams, be resolved that the following bylaw be ready first, second and third time, numbered pass signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-one dash zero nine five, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held November second, twenty twenty-one.
All in favor? Motion carried. Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Casey Owens, seconded by Lad Shaba, be it resolved that council adjourn the November second, twenty twenty-one regular meeting of council.
All in favor? Motion passed. Adjourned.